He told him, he said, "No, don't." He said, "Please don't vote me off."
He's not gonna be here, is he?
No, he'll be here.
He will?
No, he's gotta work, he said. So, I guess we're ready to start? We'll call this meeting to order. Thank you for being here. It's May 16th. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome, again. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that? Okay, thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there any changes that we need to consider to that agenda before we approve it? If there is not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Sellers?
I'll second.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. City Council minutes for May 2nd. Any concerns with those? If not, we'll acknowledge those as they've been prepared to go to the work session of May 9th. Same thing there. Any additions, corrections? We'll acknowledge those as well, and we'll go on to the bills. Got a warrant register before you? Any questions, or?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Lynch with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I already did that, didn't I? I'm reading and talking at the same time. I'm losing track. So, we voted. Did, what's that?
That's how I have the big.
Yeah, we use it once in a while. So, we got that accomplished, right? I'm reading this and I'm reading this at the same time. My mind's not, not with it, so. Are we square on that vote, on that motion? Okay, we'll move on then. We'll call the bills paid. And move on. I got too many things going on. I apologize. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what do you have for us tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Lynch?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing? Mr. Welling?
I don't have anything tonight, Your Honor.
Okay. Mr. Sellers?
Um, just a couple things. The Boys and Girls Club Friday night at 6:00 is having their awards assembly, and that's important. We're a big part of that, and they do a great job. And then, just shout out to all the police for National Police Week last week. And then, also, near and dear to my heart at one time is National Nurses Week was last week. I know where y'all have people in our families and stuff who are nurses, and healthcare wouldn't survive without them, and more and more, as doctors are dropping off, and we're getting more and more of our healthcare through nurse practitioners, we're seeing nurses take a lot bigger roles, so just a shout out to all the, all the nurses that I know and I've worked with over the years. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Higgins?
Just a reminder, this Thursday, we have the veterans riding through town. We have the veterans that come from San Diego, or, excuse me, California, all over, and then ride across to DC, and they make a stop here in Evanston and lay a wreath at the county courthouse. So, if anybody wants to attend, it'll be a site, and so cool.
Do we know what time?
When?
Thursday.
It's specific time, is it?
No, um, you know, they're coming from, the leg starts in Wendover, and there's supposedly about 200 bikes. I'll be joining them in Colville. There'll be a, there's two Evanston coalitions. One is going to Wendover and staying the night on Wednesday, and then there's a bunch of us meeting on, at Spankies at 2:30 to ride down to Colville and meet them. So, I would imagine around 5:00, 6:00, 7:00, whenever. It's a lot of bikes to coordinate, and it's I used to ride Rolling Thunder in Washington DC where they're, they're going when last time I was there, there was 250,000 bikes, and it takes a long time, and it smells like burning clutch, so.
Well, thank you. The only thing I'll, I'll add to council comments, I did have a conversation earlier today with Josh Raznick, our county's emergency management coordinator, and he indicated, as most all probably all know, the river's running pretty fast right now, pretty high, but the next two weeks, probably two weeks, a little more than two weeks, is probably going to be the peak runoff for, for our area, and so we need to be pretty careful and vigilant for the next little while, the next week, two to, two to three weeks in particular. So, just, just be careful. I know it looks like fun, but it's pretty dangerous right now. We have no, oh, I'm sorry. Did you, well, I thought you had something to, you wanted to add. Uh, we've got no public hearings or special orders. We do have a rather lengthy consent agenda, although it looks to me like they're all for the most part, repeat events. Is everybody comfortable with addressing those all together? Is there any questions, or anybody has anything to add about any of these events?
Uh, just, hey, Rocco, is Shades is gonna set up for that race, then? Is that what one of these is? Okay, I guess I got a reason to go, then, because I'm not running it.
Okay, is there a motion on our consent agenda?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Discussion?
Looks like the summer's getting busy.
It is. Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That approves our consent agenda. Lot of good events. We have no unfinished business, so we'll go to new business, and our first item there is to accept the apparent low bid for the construction of pickleball courts. Mr. Heathers? David was just telling me he wants to sign up for a
What's league?
League.
For guys with bad knees.
What are we up to? Take us away, sir.
Gotta be good. You talk about pickleball courts, they were too basketball courts. And, just, if you've got any questions, you can It's a capital project which we will start immediately. With Courts Unlimited, they did put a bid back in.
Make sure they follow up the preference act before they start.
I think they've been baptized into that process.
Have you get on the, you know?
Do you know any kind of completion date if they get started?
No, I just, I know by fall.
By fall?
It'll be done this summer slash fall.
Be able to use it, I guess, a little bit?
Um, the, when we discussed it, it was on the the budget that before it was 255, and now we're up to 378,560. Is that it?
Yeah, what, what we've got there is we have 100,000 left over from previous, which is part of that number. And then, we turned the bid in at 225, which is without lighting. And so, with lighting, it would be 375. There is lighting down there. And so, if we so choose to do the lighting, that's great. Then, uh, but if you're not, you know, in favor of that, then we would use it.
So, so, um, on that note, Scott, I've had several people contact me about how excited they are for this project, especially the basketball courts, the younger guys. One of their concerns was the lights that are there, they're, don't feel are adequate, so they would, were really hoping that that would somehow get worked in, that we would improve that lighting, so.
I think lights are a necessity because of our limited time of use, so.
And if you look down, down there, over here by the museum and stuff, people play there quite a bit later at night, and so I think that'll get used a whole bunch. But I think the lights are very, at least from whatever those guys who play basketball are talking about, it's gonna be really important.
The reason that I did not ask, well, there's a couple reasons. They have it, I get a little frugal. You know, it's hard for me to ask about much one. To me, that is a And so, I get a little bit frugal with the lighting, and I said, "Okay, we'll take some of that lighting out to keep it pleasant, so to speak." And then, we would do the lighting on phase two. But, I mean, if we can do it all at once, that's great. If we choose to do the 225 slash with the excess that I am putting in from previous capitals, that would be
And I guess
In our best interest.
The only other question I have is Courts Unlimited LLC is the company that's put in this bid. Where are they from? And they're employing Evanstonians, or no? Are they bringing their own crew?
Last time they did it, they had their own employees, so they did not, because they got their own techniques. And so, they did not hire anybody. They bring their own people. If they were to bring in, basically, a lot.
They, the preference act requires them to advertise the jobs locally for nine days. And if they can't hire anybody locally, then they can bring their own people up, and then give them a certificate to go ahead. But they have to advertise locally for nine days before they start the project. It's pretty specific. Last time they did it, there was nobody with those skills here in town to do some of this work. They are using FIFES, like the demo, which is a local company. So, they'll, they'll fall under the preference act.
A lot of the lifting and what's there, I know he's got his contractor steering it down.
I know it might seem like laying concrete for a pickleball court. It's actually fairly complicated.
Oh, yeah?
There's a little bit more that goes into it than just laying concrete, so. And even all that specialized, so.
And that's what he's expressed to me, that everything they do is just it's just not something that
It's like the football field. The same process. And, you know, that's a specialized thing, astrophysics, and you know, there's no local that could do that, so.
I feel it'd be beneficial, though, to add the lights. I'll do it all at once. Makes better sense.
We can afford to, and we're, we're kind of bridging two two budget years, true, to a certain extent, so that's, that's where, where we're going to be able to accommodate some of those, some of that increase, because we're talking about two different years at the same time, this, this year as well as as next, so. I think it's a good project. Is there a motion to approve this bid?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Lynch.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I heard Mr. Lynch over here first. Is that all right with you, Mr. Sellers? Is there any discussion? Yeah, I got the, I'm sorry.
I just have one question. I guess that's kind of bugging me, and it's more for us. I'm having a little bit of trouble with this number because there's, I, I understand that pickleball is, is an up and coming sport, and it's great, and it will benefit a portion of the community. But I'm just wondering, you know, a number like this going towards what we heard last week, the train, that brings money here. It brings millions here. And something like this could be used to fix up the train, employ the 17 to 22 demographic, which we desperately need to have jobs for. And so, I'm wondering if this is, you know, this is ha, could, I'm wondering if we have a better ROI for our kids and our community and tourism and income versus a pickleball court? Because we already have one in the rec center, and it's just a question. I'm just posing it.
Please.
You know, I can appreciate that. I really do appreciate that. But, it's, you know, to me, and I'm just a recreation guy, that's why. You know, I watch everything that goes on throughout the city. I watched bare metal was turned into what used to be a passion and was the, like a bruise on our face. And I've watched it turn from absolutely wow. People walk there all the time. They use it. And they're proud. You know, they're passionate with it. And it, and it took some serious work for that also. And so, then I watch the golf course. I use the golf course to go out there also. Is that, you know, that's, there's a lot of heartache with that. But I also see the golfers and people that do come to this town that would not come to this town. They've told me point blank. They're not coming to this town, there isn't those things at all. And I think it's one of those points you can argue back and forth, and back and forth, and tell tell the nation. And do I think it's important that the railroad stuff, you know, that's not being said. But I do think it's very important for the city to have this well-rounded things to do. Is the, is the railroad something we should go after? Sure. But, you know, this is where we're at right now. And down the road, should that happen? Probably. But it's not, it's just a stepping stone. It just keeps moving, it's keep moving, and if I find that you get it all.
I, I appreciate, does that resolve your concerns at all?
I still have the question, but I definitely really appreciate what you said there. I can definitely see your side. Yeah, I just, I want jobs for kids, and so everything I kind of asked is based off of finding jobs and the, you know, pulling up the stats from, like I did last week, from the heaver creeper and the height of COVID, just in ticket sales, it brought in $2,200,000. And that was a slim, slim year, and I'm thinking, well, how much is pickleball going to bring in when we have the golf course, which is, you know, as you say, is a labor of love and losing a million, you know, so. And, and I'm looking for jobs, so the basis of my question is jobs, because that's my focus.
The sad thing is that, you know, me, the director of the Parks and Rec, I've got full-time jobs like other, and I can't I have to
Get people.
Not, not only hire Used to be, as much as I say this, it used to be where you could have an interview, give them this and give them that, fire up, but right now, it's a war. I'm like, I You have to say that.
You know, the thing I, I would add, and I, and I appreciate that concern. I think, I, I think jobs are our, our main concern. You know, I, and I'm appreciative of the railroad and the railroad history, and, and that is Evanston history, there's no question. But the, the other thing that I have learned is when we do have companies or corporations that are coming here and looking at us, they, they're, they're not gonna look for that train. They're gonna look for amenities that we have as a community and the quality of life issues. They're gonna look at a golf course. They're gonna look at a rec center. They're gonna look at a, at a pickleball. So, in my mind, these kinds of things lend themselves to jobs as well, because that's what is going to aid in attracting some of those businesses to come, to come here, because many of those businesses that are reputable business, they look at us from a standpoint of what is going to be in Evanston for our employees to enjoy when they're not working. And, and, and so I think this does lend itself to jobs, but I appreciate, I appreciate the concern. I'm, I'm right there with you.
That explanation is incredibly valid. I appreciate that, yeah.
And having been, having been involved in recruiting physicians here, we have lost many a physician because the, especially the wives have said, "There's not, there's not enough things for my kids to do. There's not." And, and you couldn't, you could not make a point that things were close by, Proxidus is close by, Cell Lake's close by, Ogden's is close by. They, they don't understand the demographic of our travel, like people who have lived here for a while. And so, the more that we can bring them, so anytime we recruit a physician, rec center's always on the, on the agenda, golf course is always on the agenda, as much as we can show. And we have some, really actually some world-class physicians in, in Evanston. But a lot of those are people who have left and are coming home. And so, the ones that we've brought in on the fringes are because of quality of life. And they don't really care, they're, if they have young families, they're not really worried about the jobs for their kids right off. They're worried about things for them to do.
I've got a, I've got a mo, you got a question, sir?
Yeah, just one question. Again, I'm not against pickleball, I'm older. But the idea that we're, I assume we're gonna lose tennis courts. I think we have these courts elsewhere, so that we're not losing people, and also pickleball, tennis, as well as basketball. Are we using it, tennis courts? Down in that complex, there are two tennis courts there right now, with the big flash. So, they also stay there, and then the bottom two are beyond repair, and so those will be removed, pickleball, tennis, and basketball. Okay, so we have, we have all of them. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Um, just to add to her point, I, I do appreciate the fact you look at ROI and all of these things, because a business mind, we should look at ROI and the decisions we make when we spend money. The hard part is the indirect benefit of all of these things that calculate ROI. You can't calculate ROI when, as a city, we're trying to provide a quality of life. It's just hard to
Tough to do.
Calculate that, so.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. The next one, I, I don't know, it's not I don't know if I want, thank you, Mr. Heathers. Each year, we, we send a delegation to WHAM, the Wyoming Association of Municipalities. Their summer convention, and we have to provide a a voting delegate to that convention, and I'm told sadly that my number is up this year. So, I guess I need a motion to appoint myself as the voting delegate and council, and I'm assuming we're the only two going. Is that you're going? Well, that's sad. You were, you've always served that, we've
I've already done
we've ramrodded you for that.
I, I have done all ones, and it is a very stimulating meeting.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Well, I make the motion to appoint the mayor.
Mr. Lynch with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling? You might have a conflict.
I probably have a conflict.
Any discussion? There's no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I guess I shouldn't vote on that, or should I? Uh, any opposed? I guess that's approved.
I guess we got, we got nobody that wants to
Yeah, I don't think there'll be a lot of competition for that. Somebody does, they can Need a motion to release the retainage for SCI for the Union Center Power Conduit, Conduit Project. Dean, you want to tell us what we're up to here?
Was it on, Scott?
I couldn't hear Scott, so. Good evening. This is just a motion to release the final retainage for the Power Conduit Project at the Union Center. 5% that we're holding right now, $22,600. Usually, we do a motion to do final acceptance. Been working with Scott at the golf course. That's probably the biggest thing, is getting that cleaned up, and hopefully, we're satisfied with that. They, there will be some seed and some things that hopefully will grow back there a little bit, but there was a sagebrush mess there that they kind of cleaned up from the windrows, from the snow. So, that was kind of the main issue. There was a few little other things to clean up. Rocky Mountain Power has, what's the word, man-drilled the conduits. And they're satisfied with the installation and every, every, everything, and they kind of do their own inspections as well. So, Rocky Mountain Power has given me a notice that everything's acceptable to them as well, so.
So, you're, you're confident we can move on?
Yeah, unless, is there any other punch list items, Scott? I think we Yeah, they did a pretty good job. A guy spent two, three days there, especially the golf course, kind of trying to touch it up and clean it up, so.
I just have one question. I, I've been watching it, because I drive that way a lot, and it looks good, except one of the vaults sits up. The, all the others are all, like, level with the ground. Is that?
Yeah, that's, that's based on finished grade of ISA's final development. So, Rocky Mountain Power likes those flush. So, that's actually filled. It's gonna be brought in on that site, so it's set at the final elevation.
Okay, that, that makes good sense. ISA's that way?
And we actually, yeah, we actually, we actually paid a surveying firm quite a bit of money to go out there and stake everything out and make sure that all the grades were matched SCI, or ISA's final design. And kept them in the loop on everything through their property, so everything would work, and.
Good.
Thank you.
Is there a motion, is there a motion to release this retainage, the SCI? Mr. Sellers? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? Discussion?
Looks good. Especially where they ran it. It really didn't affect the golf
What's that?
Where they ran it, didn't really necessarily affect the golf course. It was
No, it was just, it was a ISO stuff. I mean, they did it in the middle of winter, because, you know, we wanted, we didn't want to hold ISA up, and in hindsight, we could have probably pushed it off a little bit, but we didn't want to be the ones that and like I mentioned before, it was actually kind of good that we did it in the winter, because all those vaults were available, and which kind of worked out in our favor, because the contractor was kind of shocked that we were able to get all the materials, because things have been hard to come by, but if you do things when everything's frozen, then you can get materials, so.
Further discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Thank you.
Resolution 2334. Ms. Kirby, read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming authorizing an application to obtain a bulletproof vest partnership grant from the U.S. Department of Justice.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, Your Honor, members of council. This is a pretty simple agreement with Department of Justice. We've had this one as long as back as I can remember, where they'll reimburse the City of Evanston for half the cost of a vest to replace. Currently, with their because they only certify vests for five years for duty use, we do have to replace them every five years, plus any new hires will have to fit a vest for them, so this is a very worthwhile agreement. We're reimbursing the city for costs that we already have.
Excellent. Is there introduction on this resolution?
All introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynch with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion?
Seems like a no-brainer.
Sure does.
How many vests we gonna give this grant?
Uh, it depends from year to year. With our, we, we try to maintain a five-year replacement schedule, and I'm not sure how many vests are due this year, but we generally buy, you know, I'd probably say about six, five to six a year.
What do they do with the old ones?
We dispose of them. We'll take them out and shoot them, and before we throw them away, so they're not, uh, falling into the hands of people we don't want to have them.
Sounds like fun.
It's a different type of
I don't want to wear, I'll, I'll put it on. Go ahead. See how it works.
Nobody wears it.
I'll chance it.
You gotta put it on, start running, and we'll see how many shots it takes.
I won't get very far. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Resolution 2335. Ms. Kirby, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of an agreement with MJSA Architects PC to provide design and construction management services for the Evanston Shades of Pale project.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, holy cow, that's odd. This is an agreement for the Roundhouse Section Four Improvement Project that we're, we're doing in collaboration with Shades of Pale. We've been fine-tuning this agreement for the last few weeks to try to get city's responsibilities and Shades' responsibilities lined out in an appropriate way. So we feel confident that we have it in, in the right place. And we got the price down to page nine, $218,500.
I think this is another valuable project for the City of the Shades folks. Are they, obviously, they're aware of this. Are they, I'm assuming that they're supportive and happy and?
Yeah, we had to, part of the issue is there are so many, there are so many different disciplines that go into, obviously, finishing a building and splitting those responsibilities between the city and Shades. It's taken a while to agree on some things. So they're working out their agreement with, with the architect as well. So get this approved, and get into design, and get moving forward.
Get moving on this one.
This was their choice. But they were happy with this architect. So this is kind of who they chose too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this will be a good, good project for the city. Good project for the Roundhouse.
What's our timeline looking like still?
Excuse me. So we'd like to have design done by October, obviously go out to bid, depending on, obviously, materials, weather permitting, contractor scheduling, and that sort of thing. We'd like to have the project kind of wound up by the end of February.
Most of it's inside, for the most part, so they could probably get started. We could accomplish some things in the winter, though, right?
Yes.
Hopefully.
Yes.
Is there introduction on this resolution? Sellers?
Second.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Discussion?
I have one question.
Please.
I know we want to get this finished super fast. It's going to be finished, hopefully, in February, which is the dead of winter. You know, we don't have a lot of tourism. Would there be any benefit to the city financially if we held off just a bit? Because construction, the materials are super high right now. I mean, they're just, concrete is through the roof. And we expect, you know, the market says it's going to drop here fairly significantly in the next, you know, quarter. Would it, would it, that's definitely a question. You know, would it benefit the city by?
I don't know. And, and we really never know going into a project. And so we, our mentality is, we don't want to delay a project, hoping and wishing that things will come down, because 2020 to now has told us that the economic wizards were not correct with prices coming back down. So we're just going to move forward and, and get things done as, as budget allows us to, and try to be as frugal as we can and responsible as we can, and get the best project that we can for the money.
I think it does push us, I mean, it pushes us till October. So, I mean, that, I mean, that's just out to bid. So actually starting to pour concrete, we're probably, could be eight months.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I appreciate the concern. I think that, that, that would concern me, because I, it's been my experience, it's very seldom do, do, do prices come down that significantly. Once they're, once they've reached a spot, they really, they'll come down. You're right, what you're saying. But I, I think we would, we'd be better off to, because of the benefit of the project in the end is going to be, I would hate to delay that benefit to the city any farther than I have to. But.
I hope, I hope prices are down by October. That'd be nice.
That'd be really nice. That'd be great. That'd be great. Barker?
I, I think as a valid, I mean, the majority of this project is concrete, for the concrete floor is, and structural bracing. I, like all of our projects, I think we, we try to bid them as soon as we can. And I know Shades is on a tight schedule, and that's not going to dictate how we spend our money. But I think the bids are going to dictate to us, basically, if we should push back or not. I mean, we have rejected bids before. We have pushed back. It's not something we like to do. But we can do that. But as all of you know here, concrete prices, we, we pay a premium in this community, and not against anybody, or I don't want to say anything, but we do pay a premium for concrete. And so that's, you know, bidders, contractors are going to have to get creative. They're going to have to look at, you know, if they want to win bids and how competitive things are. But that is the game we play, as you all know, I guess.
Good point. Thanks, Dean. Further discussion? If there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Resolution 2336. Ms. Kirby, read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, to enter into an operating agreement with the Evanston Parks and Recreation District for the operation, management, and regulations of recreation within the City of Evanston.
Mr. Ethers?
Can you hear me this time? You know, I, I handed out the operating agreement that we've dealt with for many, many years. Just to review real quickly, there's 50 or so green spaces out there we take care of, and do Harbor Day, and take care of the tennis courts. We take care of the ball fields, which you're going to see some significant upgrades there also. You know, if it's recreation, we're there. If it's green spaces, we're there. We're there. And so really, anything that's really out of doors, plus a recreation center, we are a huge part of that.
And this is, in essence, the same.
Yes.
From the previous year and year before, and all that. I read through it. I don't see any, nothing jumped out to me as being changed at all.
Yeah, the only thing that's changed a little bit, obviously, is bare meadows. We've upgraded that and, and taken that to a different level.
Is there introduction on this resolution? Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Any discussion?
It is a great job. It's fun. It is fun. It's really fun. It's very enjoyable.
What are you going to do, the ball fields, exactly? Just that one field? Are we going to start upgrading that, or?
We are looking at refurbishing and redoing the infield on the three softball fields. And so we've got a bid package out for that.
No more, no more rocks?
You know, we're trying to, we did make a deal with the hospital.
Not that I slide anymore, but.
We've made a deal with the hospital for strawberries and those different things. But we're, we're trying to get that upgraded, so it's back playable, so.
Are we going to do anything with that baseball field this summer?
Yes. And we're going to stay at that also. We're not going to make any huge changes there, obviously, but we will get the grass back and the infield and those things.
Make it a little more playable?
Right.
Further discussion? If there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Departments, anything more for us tonight, Mr. Ethers, while you're walking across there?
No.
Ms. Lynn, do you have anything for us tonight? Chief Rannish?
Sir?
Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Mr. Barker?
None.
Ms. Harris?
Ms. Harris?
Public participation. Is anyone here from the public that'd like to address the council for any reason at all? No? Okay, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everyone.